I bring the meeting of the Rushford Peterson School Board. It is Monday, January 22. Five thirty PM, we're in the Biology Room of the Rushford Peterson High School. Director Mero, we're joining us via Skype today from, why not, North Dakota. Could we, a roll call?
Valerie Howe?
Here.
Joyce Iverson?
Here.
Julie Coe?
Here.
John Linder?
Here.
Dean Mero?
Here.
Taylor Peterson?
Here.
John Pettit?
Here.
Clara Weezer?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We have a full house, so bear with us as we move into our agenda. The next item, number three, is the adoption of the agenda for the evening. Any additions or changes?
I have none.
Coe will make a motion to second the agenda.
Motion by Coe, seconded by Iverson. Any questions? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as it is? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carried. Item four, public comments. We're limited to five minutes per person, and as you know, our board policy is each person is allowed five minutes to speak. And if, we would request that there be respect for their five minutes, so everyone can have an opportunity to say what they want without being interrupted. And also, as far as the board goes, we'd ask that you respect the board's right to speak either without interruption when that thing comes. So, I would ask everyone to make sure that we follow up on the call. Beth Stenford, you would like to speak, please?
Good evening. I'm Beth Stenford. I served on the school board from 2009 to 2012. Walking in and seeing a police officer in the hallway is very concerning to me. I'm just coming tonight as a former school board member. I know what it's like to serve on the board, putting yourself out there in the public eye. I came tonight because I heard a petition was circulating that we tried to, trying to unknow the vote that we had. So my very quick comment is, I just don't know who's behind that petition, but it's concerning to me because we are in a school setting. And I think that who's ever behind some of these things, they just remember good sportsmanship. Well, when I was on the board, we spent a lot of time thinking about the cost to the taxpayers for a new school. We did a lot of surveying and trying to figure out what was the best approach. We had a vote. That vote happened some time ago, and the referendum passed. And I think in the spirit of good sportsmanship, which we're all here in a school setting, people need to let this move on. And I think we're setting a very poor example, as I say, to walk in to a school board meeting and there's a police officer in the hall, and I'm hearing that that's been gone on since September. The student representative has been afraid to come to these meetings. I think that's very concerning. I'm not from Rushford. I moved here in 2000. My kids didn't go to school here, but I still was willing to serve because I believe in a good public education. And I was willing to come and be a part of a board to make good decisions based on the information we had. My main point here, because I'm going to get upset just thinking about, well, I had to come out in the snow to address the school board, and whoever is in the community behind the petitions, I really just want to ask you to reconsider that a vote happened, it passed, and we need to move on and let things be constructive going forward. That's my comment.
Robin, can you do it just for us?
It's unfortunate that we are still here having to defend Mr. Ailer and past and previous school leaders, but here we are. So Andy Prinzen and I want to speak tonight on behalf of hundreds of community members and supporters of our leaders and this new schooling project. In the past 24 hours, these hundreds of supporters have given us permission to use their names, and a complete list will be published. Prior to the 2007 flood, RP was in need of a superintendent who had the ability, initiative, and foresight to deal with our aging facilities, issues that should have been dealt with years before, no doubt. Mr. Chuck Ailer was hired by a school board who had faith, who had faith that he was the man. It wasn't but a month after Mr. Ailer was hired that the August 2007 flood hit, and immediately it was evident that we did hire the right man. Although not fully submerged in water, the school did suffer damage as a result of the seventeen inches of rains. Mr. Ailer personally put in more time and sweat than most people combined helping clean up the school after the flood. He also worked diligently to go through the proper channels to ensure that repairs and cleanup were funded appropriately. Mr. Ailer, knowing that our facility's issues existed before and after the flood, knowing that he was actually hired to address those issues, also knew that the community could not afford to address them over the next few years due to the flood recovery efforts. So what did he do? He worked hard with school board approval to address existing deferred maintenance and code issues. He worked tirelessly to continue to clean up the inside and outside of the school grounds, and lastly, he worked diligently with state and local officials to get additional state assistance to deal with their aging facilities. Again, knowing that these issues were not going away and that he was hired by a school board to address these issues. So over the next few years of fixing, working with state and local officials, and working with the RP community, the debt equalization deal comes to fruition. This allows for RP and other school districts such as Moose Lake, who have suffered from a natural disaster that resulted in at least $500,000 in damage, to receive additional funding from the state to address their facilities' needs. What a gift this was to our community. Knowing this, once again, the school board started an effort to involve community members through the formation of a community task force on which anyone had the ability to serve, to help decide how to move forward. After evaluating many options and discussions about fixing versus building, this community task force decided that building a new pre-K through 12 was the way to go. After two previously failed votes for absolutely different plans and no additional state funding, the school board approved the new plan presented by the community task force in 2014, and it was presented to the voters in November of 2014 and passed. Once this plan was approved by the voters, bonds were sold, and once again, the community received yet another gift, a much lower interest rate than was previously projected. As a matter of fact, the cost, the total cost of the project was reduced by over $7 million, which equates to taxpayers' savings. So I recap all of this so that we can emphasize the importance of where we are today, and at this point, I will turn it over to Andy Prinzen.
All right. Our community's been blessed with a forward-thinking leader, a school board to get us where we are today, and the gift of debt equalization from the state, and the gift of a much lower interest rate than initially expected. Yet, the RP Concerned Citizens Group continues to attempt to throw these gifts away. They maintain that the school in Rushford suffered very little damage as a result of the flood, that any damage reported and paid for by FEMA were overstated, and that the accounting between damages reported and funding received is not accurate. After numerous audits and this group being told several times by state officials that their claims are unfounded, they have continued with unsubstantiated accusations and threatened lawsuits. An article was even published just recently, it's December 11, 2015, in the Post-Golden, entitled "RP Didn't Inflate Flood Damage to School." This article quoted Stan Goodison, a representative of the RP Concerned Citizens Group, as believing that Rushford, RP inflated to flood damage. The article also quoted Mr. Ailer and a FEMA official, who ultimately states FEMA agrees with Mr. Ailer. That was a quote, that FEMA agrees with Mr. Ailer. So after all the audits and digging by the RP Concerned Citizens Group, they have come up with nothing. I repeat, nothing. Tonight, more than a year after the vote, bonds being sold, contracts signed, construction underway, and payments coming in from the state, the RP Concerned Citizens Group presents petitions signed by 140 individuals that ask for a stop to the new school construction and ask to hold a special election to revote on the construction of the new school. The basis of the petition is that the previous vote should be null and void because it was based off inaccurate information, and that the current facilities are serving our students adequately. Their position is that the flood did not cause $500,000 in damage. In their opinion, RP is not entitled to the debt equalization funding. This has also been refuted numerous times, and formally in a memorandum dated December 22, 2014, from Tom Melchett, school finance director for the Minnesota Department of Education. A copy of this letter is posted on the RP School website for anyone to see. We're not sure ultimately what is driving the RP Concerned Citizens Group, but it seems that their goal continues to be to instill doubt and fear. If the RP Concerned Citizens get what they want, there will be significant additional costs to taxpayers. Do they want the school district to lose debt equalization funding? Do they want the district to default on existing contracts? Who will fund what has already been built? And who will pay the legal fees to defend our school against these blameless claims? Ironically enough, the RP Concerned Citizens Group says they are looking out for the taxpayers, but there is no one working harder than them to pass more cost onto the taxpayers. Is this really in the best interest of the taxpayers or the children? We stand firm in our gratitude and support for Mr. Ailer. Mr. Linder and all those have worked so hard to bring a new school building to our district, and we will not let the actions of a few individuals spreading false information distract us from our hope for the future of our children and our district, as we watch with pride the building of our new school. Tonight, we respectfully ask the school board to reject the petition that's going to be presented. Thank you.
There's several folks that came in later. Is there anybody else that wishes for a girl's support? Thank you. Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. We have different approval minutes, last meeting, court, hand paables, payroll, activity reports, meeting.
There are none.
Everybody had a chance to look at the items in the consent agenda? For a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Howe, for a second.
Second by Iverson.
All those in favor of item five, the consent agenda, seconded by Isaiah, an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carried? Item six, new business. Number one, approve the resolution supporting Form B, C, application of the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. This requires a roll call vote, and Coe, do you have any background on that?
Yes, we applied for this last year as well, and we were successful in receiving funding through this. The Minnesota State High School League provides school districts throughout the state of Minnesota to present ideas, suggestions, of costs that you may incur as a result of student activities, and we are presenting those in this formal resolution tonight to help us offset some of the costs that we incurred with some of our activities.
Anybody have any questions? For that?
Coe will make a motion to approve.
For a second?
No, sorry. Yeah. Takes a second.
Only a second.
Any further discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Valerie Howe?
Yes.
Joyce Iverson?
Yes.
Julie Coe?
Yes.
John Linder?
Yes.
Dean Mero?
Yes.
Taylor Peterson?
Yes.
John Pettit?
Yes.
Jake, is the speaker up as loud as it can go?
It is.
Can you hear us okay, Dean?
I hear you loud and clear, maybe I can use my mic.
Yeah, we're hearing you okay. That sounds good. Okay, item two, approve the 2016-17 early retirement guidelines for teachers, located on page 22. This looks similar to what we have done in the past, if we're right.
It does, and we have been fortunate in past years here to offer an incentive to our teachers, to those that are nearing a change in their plans as far as work and employment at Rushford Peterson Schools. So this is, again, in alignment with what we have had in the past. It allows us to provide them two years of health insurance payments, and it's calculated out there on our current amounts, so it is a maximum of course, two years, so.
Is there any interest yet in it?
I won't know until I put the memo out, and I needed board approval before I could do that, so we'll see what happens.
Is there any reason for only two years?
It is consistent to what we have done in previous years.
Well, I think it would be wise to make it for more years, and that's because teachers at age 55, with enough years of experience to equal 90, can retire. And that's not going to happen with only two years of insurance. So if it's truly to be an incentive for early retirement, adding that for more years, I think would be beneficial.
Again, we calculate that out, and we know what the cost savings is to the district, and so that's what we feel that is consistent to what we can afford at this time.
Any other questions, comments? It looks like what we've done in the past, and we've had some interest in the past, so I think it's a good idea. Anybody have any more comments, or is there a motion?
We'll take a motion to approve the early retirement incentive.
Peterson, for a second?
Oh, second.
Any further comments? All those in favor of the early retirement guidelines for teachers for the upcoming year, seconded by Isaiah, an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carried? Item three, under new business, approve the 2016-17 school year calendar, located on page 23. Anybody have any questions?
We did present it to our teachers and staff members, so that they would have an opportunity to look it over, and again, it's very consistent to what we have done in the past, with Labor Day being on the 5th of September this coming school year, and again, not starting school until after Labor Day. So first day of school would be September 6, with the last day being on, for students, the contract would be June 1, and teachers would be able to check out on that Friday on June 2.
Any other comments, concerns, questions about the calendar? I'm looking for a motion to approve the calendar for the upcoming year.
Coe will make a motion to approve.
For a second?
Second by Howe.
For Howe. All those in favor of item three, the upcoming year's school calendar, seconded by Isaiah, an aye?
Aye.
Item four, under new business, approve the 2015 through 2017 master agreement for the teaching staff. There is a closure.
The language was enclosed, and after a thorough calculation here by Tony, we did have an adjustment that we needed to make to you. I reported to you that it'd be 6.12, and it's actually going to be a 6.14. So we had asked you to make that correction on your minutes as well.
I understand that the teachers have voted on it.
They have, yes, they have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jim?
Yes, I was on the committee, and upon completion of the negotiations, there was a part of the negotiations that did not get enforced the way it's written in our contract, and that deals with paid time off. Paid time off days may not be used for working a second job. I have brought this to the superintendent's attention and asked why it was not enforced, and that got to be a discussion, and with the teacher's rep also there. So I don't feel that this is a completed deal yet because that's still open. In fact, I believe the teachers were to meet today with their representative and come up with some other language, so I think it would be premature to pass the contract today knowing that we are going to add on to the contract tomorrow or at a later date with... So I would recommend that we wait, finish the negotiations, and then proceed with the
I appreciate your concerns, and I appreciate you bringing them forthright to me and having a discussion with me in those regards. However, the contract was, that issue was put aside so that we could resolve that as, once the contract was ratified, because as a school district, you can sit down with those teachers, which we have agreed to do, and to resolve that issue and bring clarification to it. So I don't see that by holding up the contract is going to present us from getting clarification on that issue. As far as my approving the leave for employees, yes, that was approved, and I was forthright with you and said, that's an issue that's on, excuse me, that's an issue that's on me. It doesn't, the individual that filled out and asked for approval of that leave did nothing wrong, so that issue has to be taken up with me. It's not an issue with the employee.
That's interesting. I guess I'd like to know how you're going to resolve that, the issue. Is it going to be by negotiations? Is it going to be by memorandum of understanding, or is it just going to be discussed?
You were in the room with Mr. Milzma, our student rep, our staff representative as I was, and yes, we agreed that we would clarify the language and we would have a memorandum of understanding, and those are quite common.
So it is still open. Let's finish it up, get the memorandum. Instead of a memorandum of understanding, let's put it in the contract and pass the contract on. I don't believe that there's any deadlines that we'd be missing, or, as you say, holding up the contract. It's just a matter of getting our job done before we vote on it.
My understanding, there was one, that one issue involving paid time off is the only thing that's unresolved, or in your mind? Maybe, you know, I have a, I was on that committee as well, you know, and my understanding or my impression would be that that's not something that's going to be, that the teachers are willing to back off on, and I don't know if holding up the whole contract over that one issue, that might be something better left for the next contract. My personal feeling is that there shouldn't be any restrictions. If you're, you know, the time off, it doesn't matter where they are or what they're doing. They're adults, they're professionals, they should be able to account for their own time, whether they're at home or, you know, on vacation or working a second job. The distinction between getting a W-2 form seems to be rather obscure to me. I mean, some people do get a W-2 from a job, others that are self-employed don't. So to me, it would, it doesn't make much sense to use that one issue as a reason to hold up the contract. We can address it at the next contract, but I have a feeling that's not going to go over very well with the teachers.
I guess, I guess I got a different impression when I was discussing this with the board and the board negotiators and the teachers. I believe there were six people at the table at that time, and all six appeared to agree that this was something that was a second job in several instances that were, and examples that were brought up. So I don't see the resistance of the teachers to negotiate this. They have, we've talked with all of them.
Well, that incident that you're referring to was approved prior to, you know, before we even started contract negotiation, so I don't know how that we can now direct the superintendent to, you know, say that he's not going to honor that agreement that was made, you know, months ago. Think that that's, that would not be a very good policy to make if, once someone agrees to it, to back out on it.
That may be. It's certainly not very good policy to have a contract that's very clear in its wording and not following. That's, that doesn't say much for the contract either, so I think it's something that can be worked on, should be.
Like Mr. Ailer said, that's on him. It's not on the employee. The employee didn't do anything wrong, so if you want to address that with Mr. Ailer, I guess that's appropriate, but I think we've suffered from the whole contract negotiation.
Well, I think you're honing in on one particular instance, and that did bring it to the attention, to my attention and others, and that was, public perception was not very good. But later, I did receive emails from Mr. Ailer that named several other instances, so we're not talking about a single instance. There were three or four other things that were mentioned in his, in his email to, I believe it was to the attorney queering, I believe, that...
Would also be affected. I think the essence of your concern, Director Pettit, is what constitutes a second job. We have to define what a second job is, because personal days are personal days. As in the past, ever since I've been here, personal days are yours to decide. If you choose to go on a vacation on those days, that's their option. And when we put that language in there, that was an incentive those particular years for the teachers. Anybody that takes a personal day, they don't have to tell the administration what they're using those days for. So I think that's the essence of your concern, is defining what constitutes a second job. And that's what I'm willing to sit down with the board and the association and get a clarification on that, and that can be an MOU. It does not need to hold up the contract as we have in front of us this evening. And we've already made that recommendation, I've made that recommendation to you as well as to the RPA, and as well as at Minnesota, that we want to come together, we want to get a consensus on that and bring it forward and get it clarified.
I guess I did come up with it right now. It does say that we have a number of employees who have other employment businesses. They may or may not use PTA all days to work and possibly generate additional income. So to my point that I'm not dealing with just one, and so if we have clear language, which it is very clear, not for a second job, I think we should tie that up before we bring the, and then bring a completed contract to the board for approval. Appreciate your sharing your perspective.
Anybody else have any comments on the teacher's contract?
You know, if we don't have a deadline to have the contract signed and dated and all that, I guess I don't see any problem with holding it up for, I imagine, whatever day, for February meeting to get the language cleared up, set away, and ready to vote. day, for February meeting to get the language cleared up, set away and ready to go. I guess I'd rather have a full and finished contract than to have it approved and then piece together again.
Anybody else? Any questions on the item four, the master agreement for the teachers?
I'll make a motion to table till February. Is it, can we get it done by February, the February meeting?
Certainly try. Give it our best.
Oh, if that, if it's probable, I would make a motion to table the approval of the master agreement till February.
Is that above your own? All those in favor of tabling the master agreement till February, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, no? Oh, we have a roll call vote, please. Motion is to table the master agreement till February.
Valerie Howe?
No.
Joyce Iverson?
No.
Julie Coke?
No.
John Linder?
No.
Dean Mero?
Yes.
Taylor Peterson?
Yes.
John Pettit?
Yes.
Motion failed. Is there any other motions following item four?
Coke will make a motion to approve.
Motion by Coke, two seconds.
One second.
Second by Iverson. Any other discussion? We have a roll call vote again to, on item four, approving the master agreement.
Valerie Howe?
Yes.
Joyce Iverson?
Yes.
Julie Coke?
Yes.
John Linder?
Yes.
Dean Mero?
Yes.
Taylor Peterson?
No.
John Pettit?
No.
Motion is approved. Moving on to item five, approve the perpetual utility easement with the city of Rushford in closure. That involves the new school site easement that the city of Rushford would need.
The city of Rushford is seeking your approval for some easements so that in the event that they would need to access our property, that we would be allowing and to allow them to enter onto our property to contend with any, with the easement that's outlined there on, on the map that's in your package. So as you can see, there's an easement request that goes from By Meadows Lane, it goes south all the way down to almost to Rush Creek. And then there's also an easement request that goes from Tyrol Hills that ties into that easement that goes to the south as well. That is the area that they're looking at. Mainly that is a water easement, but can be used for other purposes as well.
My understanding, that's the natural drainage of that water in that area anyway, isn't it?
It is, yes, it is.
Anybody have any questions on the utility easement with the city of Rushford?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by whom?
Coke for second.
Second by Coke. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving perpetual utility easement with the city of Rushford, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item six, discussion regarding superintendent's evaluation, school board's self-evaluation and approval of the process and timeline for completing the evaluation. Joyce, I believe you had some information on that? Do you want to expand on it?
Yes. Valerie and I had gone to the training session in October and we talked about getting together and presented some things to the board. Like the graph, this is Valerie's and Jesse's, a lot of more things. But please, let me begin with that. I did provide a summary of the proposal and some rationale and referred to a number of resources. There was a booklet that we were given at the training session that I also had brought a copy for Xavier to Laura. But it's a, it's a booklet that has with the evaluation superintendent. And then we looked at the previous superintendent appraisal form, it was called, and the language of the MSBA is using this evaluation, so that's the term that was, superintendent job description, statute regarding superintendents, there's also statute regarding principles, and referred to that only because the superintendent is required to evaluate principles. And there's also Minnesota rule thirty-five twelve zero five one zero that lays out superintendent competi, competent competencies, pardon me. And the MSBA said that the job description should align with the Minnesota rules on the top of the paper. So the summary basis for evaluation revisions, process and timeline, the MSBA evaluation guide, and there is a smaller publication like this that we were given, and I have a couple extra copies. Some of the, I just kind of listed some of the topics that are in this publication. First of all, why evaluate the superintendent? And the MSBA recommends annually and possibly even semi-annually. Another title of a section is, how do we evaluate objectively and fairly before beginning the evaluation process? They provided also other resources in this publication, evaluating operating principles, timeline, a sample job description, some do's and don'ts, sampling self-evaluation. They also gave us a sample board teamwork self-evaluation, which we thought was a good idea. The sample timeline spans a school year versus a calendar year, beginning in the summer, early fall, with review of the job description, evaluation process, forms, indicators, timelines, and so forth. And in the, in the wintertime includes first reviewing the process with newly elected board members. That may likely happen, like in December, January of an election year. They suggest a mid-year evaluation form, and then spring will include the year-end summative evaluation form that's completed by all board members, submitted to the chair. The chair is to provide a summary of what has been submitted by each board member, and all comments are to be included in that summative evaluation, or that evaluation summary. And in following that, there would be a summative evaluation meeting, and since we're already in January, I've listed today as the, considering the proposed process and timeline, and received a preliminary draft of a revised end-of-year or summative evaluation based on the job description, Minnesota statute that states what needs to be included in the evaluation, the samples provided by the MSBA, and some guidelines. And again, the evaluation should also align with the job description. So we basically have a lot of comparative pieces that, there were, there were some differences in when I was looking through these items. It seemed like the current evaluation followed the sample superintendent job description provided by the MSBA rather than our, our, our job description. So I would encourage the board members to look these items over carefully and provide any other suggestions that you feel are appropriate. And I'm not sure what your schedule is, Val, but I would ask that we do this as soon as possible so that you could get your comments to me and Val by the tenth of this, of February, and we could have some back to you before February.
Didn't they also set, some of the evaluation, it's also on the job description, what RP has, and also our strategic planning goals?
Right.
What our strategic plans are, if he's following and completing those goals that we have set up?
Yes, thank you, Val. Regarding the strategic plan and goals, they suggested at least two, but not more than three, district goals, and not more than two superintendent professional developments.
I'll make a motion to approve the process and timeline, and then look to get another motion to Joyce and Val at the very moment.
Good work, gentlemen.
Something on the February agenda.
There is a motion, Coke, for a second.
I'll make a second.
Any further questions or comments on the supposed superintendent's evaluation? We have opportunities to make our comments. All those in favor of approving the proposal for the superintendent's evaluation, with our comments by February tenth, signify by saying aye? Opposed, no? Motion carries.
If I may, Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to just remind the board that I sent an email out, because Joyce jogged my memory here, talking about strategic planning. We do have a plan in place to revise and update our strategic plan. I asked the board volunteers, as of currently today, we only have one. So I would invite, well, we were hoping to have three. Our first meeting takes place on February thirteenth, and that is a three fifteen meeting, and we have. I'm sorry, yes, February tenth, to be helpful, because it's the right month. February tenth. And I can send a reminder out to you and ask you to reconsider that because we would like a couple more board members on that committee as well. Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, review and vote on ballot question petition, which will require a roll call vote.
John, if I may?
Yes.
I read Eric's memorandum here. And I just went through and I kind of wrote it down and read it piece by piece and stuff and looked at some of the statutes that were in there and that he mentioned and whatnot. And although it says we have to review and vote on the ballot question, I, from what the statute says, it says that because we got a petition presented with five percent of the, the number of voters voting at the last general election, we do have to put it out. But the catch is, say, say the petition or the vote then fails, but a judge finds that it's not something that, I don't know, it says that voters are authorized to pass judgment on, it would be non-binding, is from what I read. I guess what I understood is that the state mandates that we put it to a ballot, and a court of law will then decide whether or not the issue is one that the voters are authorized to pass judgment on or not. I don't know, anybody else?
I'm not, I'm not following that logic at all, but certainly I'm inclined to listen. Our, our school's attorney, who's an expert in this field, indicates that we're not even allowed to pass this petition on to the voters. The other thing is, you know, judges aren't in a position to decide whether schools should be building, passing up renoms. That's up to the voters in the district. So I don't see this as being a question that should be joined to a court committee.
As, as far as the board deciding, the statute says that the board doesn't have any authority or on whether or not to put it to a ballot. The statute said that we're mandated to put it to a ballot.
Well, that's contrary to the reading of our attorney, and I'd also like to point out that there's language in there that says special elections must be held for school district question, in which the voters are authorized by law to pass judgment. His interpretation is this is not one of those issues, so.
But again, it's his interpretation.
Well, I agree, but I would go with his rather than yours.
Well, I mean, he's going to tell you whatever.
He's going to tell us what the law is, I would hope. That's what we're paying him to do. So, you know, even if we, even if we did vote on it, and by some unknown miracle, the voters decided that they wanted to cancel the construction, what do you think it's going to pay for all the stuff that's been done already? We've got billions of dollars of work that's been done, defaulting on a bond would trash our credit rating, and we probably end up losing our school district. And there'd be no debt equalization payment either, and this is coming all out of the taxpayer of this district.
That's not.
That's not for, we've already voted on it once, and to spend another millions and millions of dollars on damages and end up with nothing, we still have a big hole in the ground and still have, you know, right back where it's at. So I can't see where any benefit to anybody in passing this, but, you know, it's, it's before us, so we'll deal with it. Sure. Yeah, we, well, we've got ten days to make a decision on it, so we're within that time period.
It would have, it would have started on the date that we received it, which was January twenty-first, which was last Thursday. Our attorney advised us to go ahead and, and to reject this, and he's put that into a, a motion for you tonight. And his, again, his position is, is that as a board, you do not have the authority to accept the petition. So I respect what Taylor is saying over here in regards to that it, it can and will be decided in court of law if they choose to push it that direction, but at this time, the board does not have the authorization, according to our attorney, to accept the petition.
Can I ask, because I don't think it's said in here, who is authorized to accept this petition?
As I do, it's the clerk of the board who accepts the petition. Do you, was that, did you receive it?
It was sent, it was.
It was sent to the school.
It was sent to the board clerk and the board, and we signed for it because it came as a registered document.
I guess I have a question too, as a practical matter. If that goes through, what is to stop people that want the construction to continue to do a petition and then bring that to our attention? What, I mean. What, I mean, because it never ends, that's the reason this, this statute is written as it is. You can't, you gotta have some finality to whatever is being done. We had a referendum, we passed a, we won a bond, and we got a contract to begin the construction, the construction had begun. I mean, when you, you just can't stop and start this stuff. This is something that, once it's moving forward, you know, you don't go back and say, oh, we want to redo it, it's just, it's not the way it works. You're subject to a lot of damages if we do that, so I don't understand why that would even be a, even be an issue. Anybody else have any thoughts on it?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
It seems to me we need to listen to our through, in terms of his interpretation of the law. The statute seem very clear about what the ballot question, we know that isn't something that voters are authorized to act on. And also, how can we look at this situation and see any benefit to the students, to our district, to our taxpayers, by allowing this to go to another vote when they're already cast been a vote? And if we allow it to go to a vote, it's not valid, what's the point of spending that money? I mean, elections are not cheap. It's just, you know, it's a loss, any way you look at it.
Well, the other lawsuit has had nothing to do with this, and this is pretty clear.
It won't be one lawsuit, Dean, it would be about 20 of them with, from contractors and subcontractors. So.
Well, I appreciate your concern, but I, I think it's pretty clear, and I, I can't imagine anybody wanting to approve this. It would subject this district to a fiscal problem that would never be resolved, so I think it's time to move on and keep doing what we're doing. But anyone else have any comments before we move on? Is there a motion? No, there, there's a petition before us to, uh, read the petition. The petition is, uh, shell the school board of the independent school district number 239, Restrick Peterson, canceling any general obligation bonds issued for the construction and equipping of a new early childhood through 12th grade center. So by voting yes, you would be saying that this moved forward to a vote. By voting no, we would, that would be denying that and continuing as we are, I guess. Is anybody wanting to make a motion on that there?
Make a motion to reject the petition.
Motion by Cole.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Iverson.
And before you vote, Chairman Linder, it would be advantageous for you to read the resolution so that everyone understands what you're voting on.
The resolution authorizing clerk to reject petition, whereas on honor about January 21st, 2016, the clerk of the school board of independent school district number 239, Restrick Peterson, received a petition calling for the cancellation of any general obligation bonds issued for the construction, the equipping and equipping of the new early, early childhood through 12th grade center. Whereas the district's legal counsel has advised the petition is invalid for failure to seek a ballot question on which the voters are authorized by law to pass judgment. Whereas the district's legal counsel has also advised the petition, that the petition constitutes an unlawful redelegation of school board authority. Whereas the board has reviewed a memorandum explaining the basis for the determination that the petition is invalid and unlawful. Now therefore be it resolved by the board of the independent school district number 239, Restrick Peterson, as follows. The school board hereby rejects the petition as invalid for failure to seek a ballot question on which the voters are authorized by law to pass judgment and as a unlawful redelegation of school board authority. The school board hereby directs legal counsel to provide a letter to the petitioner explaining the basis for the rejection of the petition as stated in the resolution. And the motion for adopting, for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by, and upon a vote taken thereon, following voted in favor thereof.
Okay, so by, uh. So this one is backwards, by voting yes, right?
By voting yes, we're going to reject the petition. By voting.
By voting yes, we're rejecting.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion is, is motion by Cole seconded by Iverson to reject the petition. By supporting yes, you signify you reject it, by voting no, you are accepting. Does that make sense? Roll call vote, please.
Valerie Cow.
Yes.
Joyce Iverson.
Yes.
Julie Coe.
Yes.
John Linder.
Yes.
Dean Mero.
Director Merrill, abstaining, and correct me, Dean, for reasons that he would like to see more time allowed for us to formulate a, a decision on. Thank you.
Taylor Peterson.
Abstain as well, please.
John Pettit.
No.
Vote, uh, it was four to one with two extensions to reject petition. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Miller.
Before I move on to my report, I just want to bring to the board's attention that if you would be kind enough to look in your packet, agenda item number four, what's the language? I'd like to take this opportunity to commend the RPA for working with the district and looking at alternative uses for snow days. And basically, to do away with the snow days, therefore making them online learning days. And as the RPA worked diligently to come up with some language for that, that's been an issue that we as a board have been working on. So I wish to commend the RPA for their efforts to look at that and implementation of that particular piece of language would take place in the 2016-17 school year. So just wanted you to take an opportunity to look through that. For my report, rather brief on some of the things that I wish to go over this evening. First of all, congratulations to the One Act. In my packet, I gave you the information that they were conference champs, and as of Saturday, they're also subsection champions. And they move on to competition, to section competition this Saturday at St. Mary's. So I congratulate all the participants as well as Mr. Muscle Month. In addition to that, I congratulate our choir members and band members that were selected to be in the Dorian Chorus, Chorus Festival, as well as the upcoming Dorian instrumental festival that will be held on February 29th. In your packet, I'm also extending a warm welcome to our student teachers that we have here during second semester. They've been here in advance and have a good foundation already made, so they will be taking over some teaching duties quite quickly here for us. So we are appreciative to Winona State University and for the opportunity to have those young people working with our students. A donation, a donation was received by the school district from the Valley Crest Riders and Snowmokeville Club. We extended our thanks and appreciation for their kindness and generosity. Condolences and sympathies, we took the opportunity as a district to represent you as a board at the funeral that was held for Tatiana Bronk, who's a senior here, whose mother passed away unexpectedly and suddenly on Christmas Eve. That funeral was held on January, on January 16th, and again, we extended our condolences and sympathies to Randy, Tatiana, and to both families. The end of first semester took place last Thursday, and we had an in-service day on Friday that was very productive. And we had the opportunity to have some presentations for technology updates to our paras by Dan Bebedore. English language learners, Mrs. Markowitz, presented that to our staff. And then we had two professors from Winona State here, Dr. Mary Anderson and Dr. Joan Bennet, who presented information on reading strategies. So again, we're very fortunate with that. The new school update, we continue to make progress, although it was slowed last week because of the cold weather. But they continue to work on footings and walls, and it continues to move forward. Videotaping of the board meeting this evening, that is taking place, and my thanks to Alex and Justin for being on task here this evening to facilitate that. We'll be working with Jennifer Hingle to determine when it is to be aired on the local access channel. And then we have upcoming a legislative forum by MREA, Minnesota Rural Education Association. That is taking place on Saturday, the 25th. I've informed our legislative committee, John and Joyce and Taylor, about the meeting. So far, I've received confirmation from John, Joyce has a conflict, and Taylor, you will be going, okay? So we'll plan for that, so. Other than that, the next meeting for us is just a reminder that we meet the fourth Monday in February as well, due to President's Day. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Uh, Dean's question was, what kind of platform are we using for the online learning days? And we have a variety of those we're using, but the main focus would be the Google, excuse me, Google Docs format. Mr. Tim, anything to add to that?
We have a lot of our teachers, all our students, six through 12, have a Google account. So it would be through Google Drive, Google Classroom, stuff like that. I believe our elementary, they're still kind of working on that, but I think it was going to be posted on their websites. They were going to post something on their websites for elementary students to do and kind of return the next data.
Did you hear that, Dean?
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for the question.
Anything else for Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I thought you said you were going to be working with Jennifer Hingle to determine when we're going to air this. Is there any reason why it isn't aired live?
Uh, we're working on that, we don't have that, can't get it worked out. So we, that would be our goal. So thank you for that encouragement to get that done.
Can I just say a comment?
Sure.
At our December meeting, a few of us asked questions about the project oversight committee and how this was all going to work. And I'd just like to thank the people who are volunteering to that committee because you are our.
Anything else on the superintendent's report? Moving on to the community ed report, Ms. Lasting, you got one for?
Daughter's been a ballgame, so I'm going to be filling in, that's on page 26 of your board packet. And she talks about the various things that are upcoming here, so the youth enrichment activities. And you can see the things that are going on there, and then additional after-school activities scheduled. And they have after-school art class coming up, Valentine Fun for grades K through three, youth dance for four-year-olds through sixth grade, youth glee club, third through sixth graders, STEM club, third through fifth grade, and Cookies and Canvas Family Night, which will take place on February 11th. In addition to that, she provides you some information there on youth recreation. Elementary basketball program continues to move forward with high numbers of participation. The math club held their youth wrestling tournament here on January 2nd, was very well attended, and they continue to hold their practices throughout the month of February here. And open gyms, these have been very successful through the winter months here. And the last scheduled day for open gym will be on Sunday, February 14th, so. And then adult enrichment classes, she makes you aware of the floral design class was very successful. And then upcoming classes are listed there, they range from permit to carry, English as a second language, financial planning class, retire wisely, beekeeping class, hall walking, and we currently have 25 people that are signed up for that. And then a popular one that's always well-attended is the 55-plus cars class, and that's going to be held on March 14th and 15th. And the unique thing about that class is it helps reduce your car insurance, so. And then they have some upcoming trips there, they have trips scheduled, the House on the Rock, Festival of Nations at the St. Paul River Center, and then Spring in the Cities on May 12th. And then Kids Month Club highlights, the month, uh, they average 11 kids in the morning, or more than last year, and 24 kids in the PM, and same as last year. So that's Lisa's information for you. I'm sorry, I, I need to correct myself, there is additional information on page 27, or Lisa's reported continuation. She talks about Little B preschooling, they're beginning to plan for the 2016-17 school year. And then the ECFE classes, they will be resumed, they resumed here on January 5th. They are Friday morning classes that resumed on January 8th. And then summer planning, as we all know, that'll be here before we know it, and they're beginning to meet and narrow things down as far as the details for summer programs.
Okay, any questions on the community ed report? Moving on to elementary, middle school, principals' report.
We have a lot of great things happening at both ends, elementary and the middle school. There's some testing going on right now, getting prepared, the aim setting is K-8 for the mid-year evaluation, seeing if you can still continue to have needs or get to move on to get out of certain programs. We have a scullaby competition, and we have two students moving on, so congratulations to them. We have math wizards, there's one more competition yet this year. And both of those are five E for spelling and five six for the math wizards. We are bringing the cat and a half in, in the end of February, Winona State will come in and do that production for the students. We've had different opportunities here, and it's been really nice to bring them into our school rather than fill up the buses and go somewhere and that. It's just been really handy, and the students are loving this opportunity to see something different. We continue to do the star students, K-5, and I'm still getting the, how are you doing? I don't know, how am I doing? And parents really do appreciate these phone calls that are positives. And the teachers are really good, and a super nice job this year too, having more positive calls and encouraging that support. At Christmas time, the elementary asked for food donations rather than just for the teachers, and we were able to bring 347 pounds of food to the food show. And we were very happy to do that, and the people there were very excited, and as they held the doors, we carried the boxes in. There's more, there's more, this is so wonderful, and they were so, so thankful. The middle school also just recently had a dance, and they did collect a lot of more canned goods for the food show. So that's wonderful. Parent teacher conferences are coming up here shortly, and once again, we, we know that the parents and families will be enjoying that opportunity to come see our schools. We had a couple money coming in, the Box Top for Education, which I hear a lot of people don't even see that it's a thing, but we brought in $1,064 this last time from the Box Top, which are 10 month pieces, and, you know, they're on a lot of products. And it's, um, is a simple way to help out in the milk, the milk label thing to, and also way to get a little extra funding. The assist program, which we've been a part of now for several years, our mid, your report is due February 8th, while we'll be working with Margaret and Jake and Luke and Shannon to complete that paperwork. And they're just seeing, they kind of evaluate us, how are we, how are we doing, are we meeting, are we meeting the goals? Are we in the middle of it, or something? we, how are we doing, are we meeting the goals, are we in the middle of it or is something we need to work on? And they're just making us check and we check and balance on that to make sure we're using the program as it's intended. So, it's a very worthwhile time. It's a, it's a long process, but it is all online, so it's nice you can save it and go back in it. But it's very worthwhile funding for our school district and we're finding it very beneficial to many students. Yeah, I can welcome anyone who wants to come in and visit our schools and our elementary and see these little ones buzzing up to go outside, you just can't help but smile when they're so excited to get out in this mess that we're going to go and clean our cars when we're done with this. But it's, you just can't help but smile when you go down the hallways and see these kids so excited to be in school.
One thing, Mrs. Shepherd allows me to give you some other additional good news here this evening. Thank you for allowing me to do that, Angela. Under Gold III, our junior high knowledge team, knowledge bowl team, they placed second in regional competition, so we're very appreciative to those students' involvement in that as well as to Mrs. Walters for her leadership in that and our kids performed very well. So, we're very pleased to share that information with you this evening as well.
Any questions for Mrs. Shepherd? Thank you, Mr. Tim. Anything on the high school report?
Can I interrupt for just a moment? I need to leave the board meeting if that's okay? It's parents' night.
Oh, sure.
Just to make sure we get done, is that okay?
Yep. Thank you for that.
I think there are some other parents here too that, just so we're not... Sorry.
All right. What's that, Dean? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Tim, we have all set?
Yeah. A couple of points that Mr. Taylor was saying. Planning for summer, we're already starting the high school to plan for next year with registration meetings with our students, our eighth through 11th graders. Now, with the juniors today, we'll keep meeting with them and going over different classes for next year so they can sign up through the registration process. And we started something new last year with conferences coming up in February. They're called advisory-based conferences where we really try to get the parents into the parent teacher conferences and the students and we do a little half an hour presentation on our advisory program. The students are creating their six-year plans that they need and what do they want to do when they graduate and kind of building up those skills of different career fields and then going over the registration process with the parents as well, really trying to get that parent involved when we sign up for classes so they know what classes their sons and daughters are taking. Coming up next Saturday and the following Saturday, the Russell Peterson Education Foundation's holding their annual scholarship drive and they just do kind of, I think in the past they've done phone calls. They shake, they're going to try to use some Facebook messages too, just trying to raise some money for some of our graduated seniors as they go out in our National Honor Society and some senior state members volunteered their time coming up to help with that. One of our big ones is we're kind of talking, planning for summer next year, already started planning a little bit for the 2017-18 school year, when we move into a new building and kind of the split where now the middle school, six through eight, has its own, they have their own schedule, a different schedule in the high school and just starting to have some conversations around when in the new building, when around the second floor, the six through 12 on the same floor. We don't want bells going off all day long, so trying to find a consistent schedule that our secondary school is all on the same schedule. So, really started to do some research on other schools in the state of Minnesota that are similar size to us. Looked at, I mean, our school in the middle school does a, does a 50-minute period with the 30-minute study hall, does six of those. Our high school does kind of a modified block. We've got some block classes and some skinny classes around the state. There's examples of schools that do a straight block where it's four periods, 90 minutes. There's some that go down to eight period day of 45 minutes and there's kind of stuff in between. So, we've got a group of teachers that started the process, got some high school staff members and some middle school staff members and we met last Monday for the first time and kind of went over where are we right now, what do we want to continue with, and then making that transition of what's the best for our students. And that's kind of the conversation we keep going back to is what's going to help prepare our students the most for when they leave here for whatever career they want, whatever college they want, tech school, four-year school, et cetera. So, just trying to find a different schedule that works across the board. So, that's kind of one of the big projects and as we continue to go, I'll update you guys for sure and then we'll kind of come with prior recommendations of what we want to do and make sure you guys are on board with us doing that and fitting into the contract and all that stuff too. And then the last thing, I didn't have it written down, we've got two new foreign exchange students today, kind of got a call last week. We have Hermann from Brazil, who is actually leaving at the end of this week. He was, sometimes you get full year students, sometimes half year students. So, he's kind of leaving at the end of this week, a little cold for him, he said. And then we got two new ones coming in and they're living with Jennifer Wood and Peterson and Vladimir Makelov, he's from Colombia, and then Julijet and I'm not even going to try to say the last names, I think there's eight consonants and one vowel, it's about 30-lettered long. And he's from Thailand and they showed up this morning and got signed up for classes. So, kind of a neat experience for them and we'll kind of take it from there. So, it's kind of a real exciting thing for both, I think for the students coming in as well as our students who part of programs like that, you get some of those different officers here and it seems to be a good fit for our schools. You know, Mr. Biedorff's down at the basketball games, if you guys have questions on that, I can answer others, I'll go through his report more.
Sure. Yeah, what about Duncan?
With the athletics department there, the One Act play, I know Mr. Taylor spoke on that, so they're going to go to Winona on Saturday for the section meet and they present or they perform for the middle school and high school this past Thursday and then the community on Friday night and then their competition on Saturday here, so they've got at least one more, hopefully two more presentations that they get to do of the show. Winter dance team has been out and about the past few Saturdays, kind of going and dancing it up and having fun. The coaches have done an awesome job with them and this year they started like, I think Mr. Biedorff said earlier, a jazz team as well as a high kick team, kind of two different ones, so that continues to grow and we're getting more girls involved there, which is a great thing. Boys' basketball, they've had, you know, some big games where they play at La Crosse Center, they have Minneapolis North. This coming Saturday, they've got a team from Iowa and so they're kind of getting to the tri-state region here and playing a bunch of different teams. Been playing well. The pink out night, as Mr. Biedorff said there, they've got a boys and a girls' pink out night and our seniors give back advisors of Cherie Vicks, Jenny Helgemoor, and Aaron Thompson. That's kind of their big fundraiser for the seniors to give back and do a phenomenal job. And I know this year they raised the goal to $7,300 that they're going to try to raise to give and I think last year, you know, they were under that and they've always met the goal and that's just through student donations going around. It's a great thing that they do and it's good that basketball teams can be a part of that. Wrestling, of course, we're combining with Lewiston, Altura, and they've had their two matches here. I think this week they've got parents' night up in Lewiston, which should be their last home match and then coming up before our next board meeting, they've got team sections and individual sections. So, that's running well. And then girls' basketball, as you saw, we have to have some of our meeting leave to go to the girls' game tonight. They're coming up good on their season two, they played three home games last week, three this week, so they get a nice dose of home cooking last week and this week. Their pink out game is coming up as well, so lots of good things going on for our arts and athletics and schools altogether.
I heard that you guys play North Minneapolis.
Yes.
Can you tell what you guys, field trips that you guys did after the game?
Yes, thank you.
It was so neat.
Remind of that, I think, the last year they came down and played and I think Mr. Taylor, Mr. Biedorff, and Mr. Vicks were instrumental in setting up pizza last year for them with the creamery and they kind of got to know each other. So, this year they did that again, the Minneapolis North, some of those boys wanted to see a dairy farm. Never been out on a dairy farm in their life, so after they went out for pizza, they took them out to the Oyn Dairy Farm and they got to go out there and I think there were some pictures, I mean, there was, I saw some kids, they have videos.
Videos, I liked the one video where the young man was trying to put on milkers. Of course, cows was moving his legs and it took about over five minutes, he finally got the milkers on and he just high-fived everybody.
People there doing that, they were taking selfies of themselves with the cows and they said there was one boy that he went in and he was in the barn for about 45 seconds and he had to run back out and almost threw up just to throw him the smell. It's kind of a culture thing for the boys, but I think it was a great thing because it's something that there's, they're not going to experience up there and got to do that and some of our boys went out there with them. So, again, one of those great things that doesn't always happen.
I agree, you guys, for arranging that.
Steve Wyman led the charge in Johnson Rolling Acres, provided the dairy setup that we get to tour and as they've indicated to you, it was a very positive thing and even made some comments by one of the sports writers in the Minneapolis paper. So, obviously that may even grow some likes for us and gain some more popularity, but it was well-received and I commend the players for having that opportunity to not only compete against one another, then afterwards have done a fellowship afterwards and then have that opportunity to go out and just spend some time off the basketball court.
Any questions for Mr. Tim on the report? Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else have anything? We will be back here on the 22nd of February for our regular board meeting. So, thank everybody for coming out on this winter night and try something. Well, Mr. Moore, good hearing. My teachers, no questions?
Thank you, my child.
February 29th?
Stay warm out there, Dean. Thank you.